All right, we're going to call to order the May 4th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority, and also the concurrent special meeting of the West Sacramento City Council. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Jason Rizzi. The council did meet in closed session to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with represented employees in Local 39, Local 522, and the West Sacramento Police Officers Association, and no action was taken. I'm informed by the city clerk that our public notice that was printed in the newspaper record for this week indicated that we would be holding a public hearing tonight on a series of actions related to properties held by the Redevelopment Agency, and that was a typographical error. That public hearing will be held on May 18th, Madam Clerk, is that correct? So, May 18th is that public hearing, so we apologize if anyone is here this evening to testify on that item. But if you are, you're certainly welcome to provide testimony under Item 1A, and we'll maintain the records for the 18th, but that item is set for that date. Right, Item 1A, it's presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is an opportunity for public forum, although we do note that, under state law, we're not permitted to have an in-depth discussion or take action on items that are raised under Item 1A. We request that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available on the side of the room, and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also recognize that, for some folks, speaking in public can promote a bit of anxiety, and so we ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. Also, when we get to our regular agenda items, which are few this evening, we'd also ask that, if you wish to speak, please turn in the card prior to the conclusion of the staff presentation. Once the council questions and discussion and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under Item 1A. The first is by Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Testing louder?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I think our bus service is picking up passage, more passengers, as a result of the gas price increase, and so I think we need to reassess it and maybe provide more service, especially that between our Yolo County cities, because I've noticed, when I take rides between the cities, there's folks standing up, especially, seems like college, young college folks. And at our homeless tenure plan, it seems like we ought to have someplace where somebody can go, or be taken to locally, if they're homeless, rather than have to depend upon the first person whose door they knock on. Somebody like me knows where to take them, or where to give them a taxi ride to. That place would be open, but maybe that's further down the line. But anyway, I just thought I'd mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Michelle McCarty? Oh, Michelle just stepped out, so let's go to Lisa Baker with Yolo County Housing. Don't worry.
Good evening, Lisa Baker, Yolo County Housing, everywhere in the county, including West Sacramento. It's my distinct pleasure tonight to bring you our 2011 calendar, and it's only taken me this long to get to you. So, if you know Art Come and Tell, you have to make fun of him, because he's Mr. January, and you missed him. But, in here is our annual report, which will detail for you our budgeted and expenditures. I know a lot of folks get questions periodically from residents about certain frequently asked questions, and so we have a handy guide here, which can help folks with that. And in the back are basic human health and services within the county. We're always looking for additions, so if you see something to add for next year's calendar, let us know. But this is a handy guide, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback on how it helps people find stuff. In addition, we've, this calendar is special to us. It highlights the current residents and graduates of our programs who have made a difference in their life, because we're here. And it covers everyone from the mayor of Woodland, whose family started in migrant farmworker housing in Madison, through veterans who served in the space shuttle mission, to graduates who got their nursing degree paralegal, or their bachelor's of science from UC Davis by going through our programs. And in particular, for West Sacramento, we like to highlight March. And there's a disabled woman who lives in Davis, who takes a bus to Goodyear in West Sacramento for job training every week. It's amazing. And here in West Sacramento, a refugee from Chechnya, who lives in one of our developments, who's remaking their life. So, we hope you enjoy it. And also the recipes, which were contributed by residents, staff, the food bank, and several other partners, and residents of Yolo County Housing. So, from our family to another portion of our families, we want to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Baker, and Michelle McCarty. She's here for the South Port Schools Book Fair, and we all have the Book Fair Carnival flyer at our desk, which I'm sure she's going to make reference to.
Gentlemen, thank you for having me here this evening.
Miss McCarty, there's a little button at your right hand. If you, it will bring the podium so that the microphone's right at your, ah, exactly. So that the folks at home can hear better from the microphone.
Is this better?
Perfect.
Okay, I'm a little forced, thank you. As I was saying, thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to come here this evening. I am the coordinator for the South Port Elementary School Book Fair. This will be my third time as their coordinator. Last fall was the first time we participated in the One for Books program, which is sponsored by Scholastic. We pick a local beneficiary, we set aside different activities to raise funds so that we can donate books to our beneficiary, and then they match the funds for their own national beneficiaries. Last time, we chose the Colleen's Teen Center, and we raised through a coin drive and through some various raffles over $900 in books that were donated, both to the teen center and to our individual classroom libraries. So, we had a very successful time last time. We are doing One for Books again. Scholastic has chosen the theme "School Carnival: Your Ticket to Read" as our theme for this spring, and so we've chosen out a school carnival. And we've chosen, as our beneficiary, the, all of the after-school programs in our city. So, I'm working with the YMCA and Kids Zone both. They're trying to get folks and parents who use their programs to volunteer and be part of it, and so we're hoping that we can give them, you know, an equal or more amount of books than we were able to give the teen center last time. So, I was always thinking with my committee on how I could get you gentlemen interested, and ask you how you might be helpful and supportive, other than getting the word out about what's going on. Of course, great things came to mind, like-
If you say dung tank, I'm going to turn off your microphone right now.
I was going to say, yeah, how many people would pay to pie in the face their mayor or dung tank? But we did see something in Scholastic's suggestion that said that you could offer during your book fair, maybe some set-aside reading time. And one of the committee members came up this morning with the idea of how cool would it be to have your city council members or your mayor reading a book to you, if we had a special booth for that. To come to the school is free. We're charging 50 cents for the tickets. All of the proceeds for that, again, will go to the One for Books program, so the after-school programs can buy books. We've got a small vendor's fair with a book walk, similar to a cake walk, but books are either prizes in the cafeteria. The Bounce Spot is donating one of their bouncy things for our carnival. So, I really hope that if you know any vendors that you think would like a $20 table, that you'll refer them to us. I've got my contact information on that flyer, and I hope that, at very least, you'll come out or bring your families out and enjoy our fair, if you're not able to participate. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. That's great stuff. Right, and there's no, there's not a web link, is that right? For folks who are watching at home and want to get more information, the best way is just-
It's very hard to get this right. It is www.scholastic, no, I don't know it off the head. I don't have it memorized. But my email address is spbookfair@hotmail.com. That's directly to me and all of my signature signs, so I can respond to you with the book, with the book fair thing. But, I'm sorry, the carnival is Saturday, May 14th, from 10 to 2, at South Port Elementary School.
Great, thank you very much. All right, those are all the requests you have under Item 1A, so proceed to Item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 28th, I attended the Crisis Communication Disaster Preparedness Workshop for local elected officials. And basically, it was a two, little, two-hour-plus program, just detailing what the structure of the nationwide emergency response, notification, how that propagates throughout the country, down to the local level. And some of the major points that came out were that everybody, all the different organizations have a spot within disaster preparedness, and the issue is to not do something that someone else is already supposed to be doing, and not stepping off. And what they did really give emphasis to the importance of leaders, committee leaders, coming out early, within 15 minutes, or just really early after disaster occurs, for a couple of points. One is to try and instill calm with the people. The other is to show that the officials and the government has its act together. And they used a couple of examples. Giuliani was an example of how to do it well, and the messaging that went with that. He was able to basically, in the staging of people in front of the camera, instill a sense of competence in that particular disaster. The opposite end was the New Orleans disaster, and that looked like a fiasco, and people really lost confidence in that. So, the bottom line is, as we, I think we have a public information officer in the city that's responsible, from the city's perspective, to basically coordinate electeds, that initial response. And so it was good, in terms of the messaging, and how you basically convey compassion for, you know, whatever the event is, but also show optimism that the situation will be ready. So, there's, it was a good, good seminar, and it was fairly well-attended as well.
Mr. LaDesmond?
Thank you. I have a couple of meetings to report on. First of all, on last Monday, the 25th, I attended the Yolo Solano Heritage Program GPA and Natural Habitat GPA, where we had a board meeting. And one of the items under discussion was a discussion around the proposed governance structure for the Yolo HCP. And what came about, which was interesting to make sure for our city, was that each participating jurisdiction will retain a full responsibility for implementation of the natural habitat program. So, that means the cities within the jurisdiction will be able to continue to use their own land use authority and other permitting processes to maintain compliance with the plan. So, there was unanimous sort of head nodding on that, and we were able to kind of move forward on that. Also, last week, I attended a subcommittee of the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, where we reviewed some of the applicants for the Clean Air Funds and Grants that they hand out. One of the more, we made recommendations for three award winners. It'll go to the full board next week. However, one of the items I thought would bring to your attention was that the amount of, the few amount of people that applied for those grants. There was a lot of discussion around that, in that we only had three applicants, and we're, which is not normal, I guess, for that district. There were a few folks from Woodland and other areas that were concerned about the outreach, but they maintained their processes remained the same. And they believe it was more of a factor of the money that was available for those grants diminished year over year, and people just may have thought that there wasn't enough money for their programs. So, we have asked for a review of that process for next year. We did not use all the funds. The recommendations were not to use all the funds, so those will roll over to next year. And so, we're going to do a much more, better job, make sure staff does a better job there, to make sure businesses and agencies and whoever else that's applying to apply for those have an opportunity to go for those. So, those are two updates I have for you today.
Mayor Portem Kristoff?
Yes, on Monday, April 25th, we had the River City Regional Financing Authority meeting, and I am very happy to announce that the lockbox was full, and all of the bond money that was supposed to be paid towards the bond was paid. And that was about it.
Yeah, we also elected a new president for the JPA, and based on his deep commitment and willingness to attend all of the 20 minutes of the meetings per year, Mayor Portem Kristoff was selected by his peers to be president of the authority, I think for the third time, if I remember correctly. Loss count, so, yeah. All right, Mr. Villegas?
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the more recent assignments, these, you may have forgotten, but the Remote Access Network Board Meeting, I didn't forget. And attended that in Woodland, at the Yolo County Sheriff's Department, on April 28th. We were represented well by our police chief there, and learned more about the live scan machines throughout the county than I ever thought I needed to know, but interesting meeting nonetheless, and we were well represented at that meeting. And then this evening, the Up for West Sacramento Preschool Executive Committee met. We received an update from the First Five on the status of all the pending cuts to the state's First Five, and effectively what that would do to the county's First Five and our universal preschool program here in West Sacramento. So far, so good. And then we received a very extensive, very thorough, actually, update on the proposed 11-12 work plan and the budget for our preschool program. And we're also expanding the, sort of, the essence of our preschool program is now moved beyond just simply preschool. And so, we're looking at, we're considering a new logo that would emphasize the other components of it, which is expectations for early learning, because it's not just preschool anymore. We've moved out of just preschool, so it's more than that now. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Villegas. A couple of reports. Last week, I testified before the State Secretary of Resources and the United States Department of Interior Deputy Secretary for something, I think water, or something like that, on the Bay Delta Conservation Plan and its implications for Delta communities. It was the Delta Counties testifying, and then me on behalf of all of the Delta Cities. And we raised the issues that are, we've talked about many times here around land use issues and the map, the definition of what we mean by the Delta. But also, you know, just to connect back to Mr. LaDesmond's report about the HCP, the importance of alignment between the Bay Delta Conservation Plan and the HCPs. And, because we're talking about a lot of easements, and a lot of habitat projects. When we launched on the, on the HCP, you know, 12, 15 years ago, you know, we, the notion was, there are significant habitats we'd like to create. We're not going to be able to do them all, and so let's figure out what the, what the, what a coherent set of priorities are as a county, and then we'll do those together. Well, BDCP is planning on doing tens of thousands of acres of habitat projects, many of them in Yolo County, and those that are in Yolo County will be in the area surrounding us. They'll be in the bypass in the Clarksville District and other riparian areas of Yolo County. And so, the need for both coordination, but also saying, you know, how, what's the right amount of habitat restoration? We wanted, we want to create the right size and the right areas for habitat, but they need to be, as opposed to just, we have to, we're required to buy this much mitigation because of some amount of development or some canal project. It shouldn't just be based on that. It should be based on what's the actual habitat that we need for the hawk, and for the beetle, and for everything else. And so, there hasn't been very good coordination between the BDCP and the countywide HCPs, both ours and others. And so, we're trying to build, make that linkage a little bit stronger. I should also note, the stewardship, also the Stewardship Council released the next draft of its Delta Plan, and although it still has lots and lots of issues for us around covered actions and other things, we did, we got a footnote in the, in Draft 3 around, at least mentioning the fact that the whole sustainable community exemption exists. And so, that's, you know, in a document of that type, even a footnote and other annotation is a step forward. On the other hand, they continue to be maddeningly imperial in their sense of what their authority is. And so, I think there's a line in the plan that I don't, it may have been there before, but it's, but in their attempt to try to assuage concerns by us and just about every other human being that's paying any attention to this about what the scope of what they mean when they say "covered actions" that would be subject to appeal, they say it is unlikely that a building permit to add a room onto a house issued by a city would be subject to the covered action rule. Now, by saying that it's unlikely, you know, they weren't even willing to go so far as to say, no, that's obviously not a covered action. That this, the, the fact that they weren't willing to even go that, to say that simple statement in their attempt to try to make people worry less, I think, had the exact opposite effect, because it clearly said, their sense of what their power is is so much further than what anyone in the legislature or anyone else had anticipated when this, when this act was approved. So, stay tuned. There are a lot of people working to reel them in, and we're certainly, we've got our-
I'm going to ask, you're going to appoint them.
Then the, I think, at our last council meeting, we reported on the first of Mayor Johnson's convenings, of regional elected officials around the effort to keep the Kings in the Sacramento region. We had one additional meeting since that time, last week. Last week, so Councilmember LaDesmond and I attended both of the meetings. And last week's meeting was, was an update. It was prior to the announcement, so we didn't, we did not know at that stage what the determination of either the private determination of the MBA in terms of its advice to the ownership of the Kings, or to the Kings' owners themselves, what their intentions were at that point. But it was an update on what had been occurring with the MBA, with the owners and with other developments at that time, all of which are now public, I think, so there's no, there's no need to go into detail about that. Should indicate that Mayor Johnson has, at cap to cap, is working to assemble with the Metro Chamber another such meeting, and so Mr. LaDesmond and I will be there again as part of that conversation, just for the council and certainly for the, for anyone else in the community that's interested. We're, this is, there's been no, despite a lot of folks trying to get ahead of all of this, there hasn't been any discussion about what it means for there to be regional support for the, for building a sports and entertainment facility or an arena. And certainly no discussion about any sort of tax measures or local finance contributions and what have you. And at some point, whether that becomes part of the conversation is really going to depend on what the, all the, what the other private sector components are. And frankly, at least from my perspective, it's going to depend on the full package of infrastructure that's going to be necessary to serve a downtown-based or a rail yards-based arena. And I made it clear to the mayor and to others in Sacramento that those critical pieces of infrastructure include another river crossing and the streetcar project. And our preliminary data from SA-COG supports the notion that you, that you can't build a rail yards-based arena without proceeding with both of those projects, and meet our environmental requirements. And so, although the press coverage is mainly about the arena itself, there's a lot of other issues wrapped into this as we proceed on the infrastructure piece, and that, it's not, this project's not a benefit to West Sacramento unless the transportation access, infrastructure components are part of it, so. Then finally, we did have a Streetcar Policy Committee meeting on Monday. Mr. LaDesmond and I attended on behalf of the city, and Mr. Johansson was there as our alternate. The, I mean, we had a really extensive briefing and discussion about the city of Sacramento's ongoing project to do essentially a comprehensive study of all of their streetcar options. And so, I think the council's aware, the city of Sacramento is, in addition to examining route alternatives for the, for the line that connects to West Sacramento, is also evaluating streetcar lines in Arden Fair, and I forget where else, as part of a more comprehensive look, which is why we didn't have a full route identified when we applied for the federal grant last year. So, we got an update on the timing of that, and that is proceeding. I think it was in July that their city council is going to be getting more definitive and for recommendations about how to proceed. We pressed them about, well, are all of these being looked at equally? Or are you, are you, does it matter that there would be a streetcar that would go all the way up to your city and then stop? Does that, does that give it a, does it give it a, I think I asked, does it give it five extra points over the other ones? And they did assure us that, you know, that, you know, that this, that is, they stood, that is their principal project still. Having said that, neither of the two representatives of the Sacramento City Council were present at the meeting. So, Councilwoman Bonnie Pennell was there as the representative RT, and Councilman Jay Shinero was there as the alternate for the Sacramento City Council Representatives. But neither Mr. Cohen nor Ms. Ashby were present. And so, you know, at the end, I think we, you know, made the point that we need to, we need, we need to know that we're serious about making this project happen. So, I think the message I know was received by both the council alternate and by the city staff, but well, on that project and on the bridge project, city staff, on that project and on the bridge project, we're putting renewed focus, if the timing is right. The mayor has indicated repeatedly he's supportive of both projects proceeding now and no more studies. All right. I want these appointments to boards and commissions. We have none, so that brings us to the consent agenda. And as been indicated, we are holding a concurrent special meeting. Item three on the consent agenda, which is the resolution declaring the lots as a hazard and scheduling, scheduling the public hearing, was intended to have accompanying it the item on the, for the contract with Scott &amp; Sons for Weed Abatement Services that did not, did not make it into our regular agenda, so that is the purpose of the concurrent special meeting. But we're, we can consider item one on the concurrent special meeting with the other items on the consent agenda in a single motion, if the council so desires, if there are no requests to remove it. So as we go into this, it would be items two, three, and four on the consent agenda on the regular agenda, plus item one on the concurrent special meeting, unless any member of the council wishes to remove one of those items. All right. Are there any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mr. Viegas. And seconded by Mayor Protem Kristof. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted, and item one on the concurrent special meeting is adopted. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, aren't on your calendar that I wanted to point out, the United States Army is going to be celebrating its 236th year of service, and they invited us to do a mayor's proclamation and to have one of the council members come to the Sacramento River Cats game on Sunday, June 12th, to present the proclamation along with other jurisdictions in the area. So if any of the council is interested in doing that, let us know. And the second item that's not on your agenda is the Yolo County Redistricting Advisory Committee is in the process of helping to update the, gathering information on the process the Board of Supervisors is going to be going through to update the supervisory districts. And on May 18th, they're going to be holding a meeting in West Sacramento. And they haven't yet decided on a time or a location. They're actually meeting this evening, and they're going to be having that, those discussions then. I just wanted to remind the council that on May 17th, you have a special closed session meeting that should be on your calendars.
Questions on the calendar? All right. Then city manager reports.
Two quick items. First, I wanted to let the council know that the National Public Works Week is May 15th to the 21st. This is a program that's been in place for 50 years or thereabouts, and it's been celebrated in West Sacramento since we incorporated. We will be putting up a banner this Friday at the Jefferson Off-Ramp that will alert people to the celebration. And then a specific invitation to the council on the 20th of May, there'll be a barbecue at noon, where the Public Works Department and other city employees will celebrate the Public Works Week. And then one other item, the vessels that have been in the port that we've attempted to relocate and eliminate, we have made some progress in their litigation, and we've been granted our request for an ex-party hearing, and that's going to occur on the 10th of May. And so that's, that was the first step, and the outcome was good, so we were granted the hearing.
Questions for the city manager? City attorney report. He stole your thunder. He gave you a report just now? Yeah. That's not nice.
Stole your thunder?
Yeah. Staff direction from members of the council. And we have no future- Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, I wanted to acknowledge Fire Marshal Rizzi and the city clerk's office, the recent change to the city's ordinance regarding fireworks. We have to go through a very extensive selection process for the nonprofits to be able to sell safe and same fireworks this Fourth of July for the first time in our history. I understand the process went very smoothly, and there was a whole host of organizations that applied, and the process to randomly select those that were fortunate went well, and I think everybody felt that they had a fair shake and opportunity at it. So just wanted to acknowledge the work that went into making that happen. So thank you.
All right. And we have no future agenda or requests. Their motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem Kristof. And seconded by Mr. Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.